Keep an eye on how many chairs we have and if we need a few more, are there some real handy that we can grab?
Yeah.
Okay, alright. And we might need a few extra, so bring some in.
Yeah, I like it. Definitely beats the Durango. Find a long shot. What's that?
You got the truck?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, bye.
From both of us.
Time is seven o'clock. We'll go ahead and call any order. Please rise to join me in the play decisions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and consider it my homeland for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. D, will you please call and roll?
Karen Hagan?
Present.
Georgia Holmes?
Present.
Andrew Kramer? Bob Nelson?
Here.
Carol Ann Swirzenbach?
Here.
Kristis Palain?
Here.
Tim Tesher?
Here.
Skyler Wexler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, our first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. If anyone has any conflict of interest items on the agenda, please speak up either now or when that item is being considered. And I will accept a motion to approve the agenda. We do have one amendment. Item D in new business is been removed. That temporary alcoholic beverage license is not needed by bourbon counties. So would accept a motion to amend the printed agenda to include that change.
I make the motion to accept the amended agenda to remove bourbon county? I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the agenda. Is there any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the minutes, and I'll accept a motion to approve the minutes of the April 17 meeting with one minor correction. If you'll note on line one of the printed minutes, there's a typo. It should be, it should reflect the April 17 meeting there on line one as opposed to April 3. And we can get a motion to accept the corrected minutes. Take that at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the April 17 then and correction. Our second then?
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the minutes as corrected. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to claims. Item A bills in between.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills in between.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the bills in between. Are there any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B is current claims.
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded that we approve the current claims. Any discussion?
Yes. Lady Jaden? Way down to the bottom, three floral. Is that tree money that we've already got a grant for? Or is that one that we're putting in for?
No, it's probably a grant for. So that reimburses up to a thousand dollars of our expenses. We still have the additional expenses of our, the flavors time, we'll pick up the tree, the gas money as well. So we kept paid about $2,000 when all said and done, trees are in the ground. We have a thousand dollars to be reimbursed once the project's done. So a thousand of ours and a thousand of the federal's money.
Also on page 10. $5,177 for tables and banquet chairs. Did Chris budget that this year? I couldn't remember if he had or not.
And he does.
I think that should be the last year you guys see that expense. Last year you did about half this table and chairs, and this year is the other half. So we should be about done with those.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on current claims? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You also have item C Wells Fargo credit cards before you there. Accept a motion to approve those as listed.
Motion to approve? I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the Wells Fargo credit card, cards. Is there any discussion?
I just have one question. It seems to me like preusing the credit cards a lot, a lot more than what is it, is it my imagination or is that a fact?
No, that's not.
Is there a reason for it?
They find it very convenient. It works for us in a lot of ways to make purchases, especially through online sites like Amazon. Lot of one kind purposes that we make through companies where we've identified here the Wells price credit cards work. And then a lot of recurring payments that we have or charges through things like Facebook or our stamps.com. We pay those with a credit card so that we can renew it instantly, won't need more funds.
I have a question too. Because how many do we have?
How many credit cards?
Eleven. So do we have a maximum on each of them?
They all have different amounts, and there's a list at City Hall that you can come and see.
Do we ever go over that maximum?
Each person or until?
Of the card or whatever.
There have been times, you, there have been times that a limit has been exceeded on the cards, but we haven't paid a fee for that. You just make a payment right away because overall our credit line is greater than any, any one person's individual card. So we don't go over that.
But we've never paid any?
No, never since 2014. We had a, we started having a credit card charge.
Okay.
We apologize for it very much.
And with that payment support to go through bills, when I started, it was a lot more like you said, on account purchases. So I'd always look and see what's local versus what's non-local, and now it's beneficial to the council especially to go through and look at credit cards as well. A lot of those are non-local purchases. Make sure we do our diligence by shopping locally. Amazon didn't look good here, I know that much. Probably are picking up as much local as possible.
Just seem to be my going through and looking at all these, it seemed like this list of credit card charges just keeps hitting longer and longer and longer.
There's a lot that are recurring to this year unless we definitely want to.
Any further discussion on the credit cards? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We do have a public hearing at 7:10. I will open the floor to communications from the public, but please be advised that you may be interrupted as we get to that time of the public hearings. And we've had several just to, go ahead.
I'm Ina Winter, out 12961 Nurse Drive, Hot Springs. Winter like the season. I'm here to ask for the council's endorsement of our event. I'm speaking on behalf of Climb Hot Springs. Our inaugural event last year attracted 75 participants from 15 different states. This year we're looking to expand both the number of participants and the reach, geographic reach. We need your approval, your endorsement of our event as reflected in the minutes so that we can pursue permission from the state Department of Transportation to hold our event on their highways that occur within the jurisdiction of the city. So I'm requesting their endorsement of our event.
Okay, thank you. And if you'll notice, we have a 7:15 hearing for the Rotary Club to provide refreshments for the event. So we appreciate that event being held. Thank you. And we've got about a minute for our 7:10 hearing, which will be a hearing for temporary alcohol beverage license for the Rotary Club to be used in Centennial Park on the 3rd of July for the traditional street dance.
You're talking about, ma'am, that's just an endorsement?
Yes, to be supportive of the event so that we can take the minutes to the DOT so that they know that the city approves our event.
Do you want that done tonight, Ina, or is it okay for the 15?
It's anytime before June sometime.
Okay, it's the same, same course as well?
It is.
Crossing the Jennings and Lycott?
Right.
Okay.
And what we'll do is we'll put that formally on the agenda for the next meeting, and then we'll have endorsement at that time. That be alright?
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. And I will open at 7:10, we will open the temporary, the public hearing for temporary alcohol beverage license for the Rotary Club to be used at Centennial Park on the 3rd of July for the street dance. Is there any comments from the public? This is an open hearing. If not, from the council? I will accept a motion then to grant that temporary alcoholic beverage license for the Rotary Club.
I'll make, I'll make that motion that we grant the temporary alcohol beverage license for the Rotary Club to be used at Centennial Park on July 3rd for the street dance.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we grant this temporary alcoholic beverage license. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. License will be granted. Our next hearing is at 7:15 PM, so are there any additional communications from the public? And again, please be advised, we may have to cut you off. We're not, we're not being mean or anything, but we will have a public hearing at 7:15.
Is there any legal reason that we can't vote on this Climb Hot Springs thing tonight? So this lady don't have to wait two weeks for us to do this?
Probably, and you know, that's a good question. I don't know, typically, it's just, in a good way, it's always been done. It's on the.
I think unless it's an emergency, it's supposed to be.
Yeah, usually it's.
Usually that's the way we do it.
May license to give, give public enough time that if it's on, that it's about to be discussed. Something like this, it's really not, the rules not going to end if you approve it tonight. But I think given she has no experience, she needs for us to do it. It'd be the safest bet just to go for the 15th and have it on there.
Well, whether, you know, I mean, it's kind of, on my, my opinion, it's kind of a no-brainer as to which way the votes could go.
Right. Appreciate you.
Then have you sit here and wait two weeks for us to tell you what we can?
I'm not going to sit here for two weeks.
You know, if, if you've got to go ahead, the planning and the preparation can go ahead.
If you have a race, at least have alcohol there, so.
We'll prove it every time. Do you have anything else to?
I do, we've got a police officer here, and for anybody that's, I don't think it's on the agenda anywhere here, but we got a new police outfit. Got a new truck, and I seen the guys out running around with it Saturday. Was that what I talked to you guys Saturday afternoon? It's really a sharp-looking outfit, and our, the policeman that I've visited with so far that have had the chance to drive it and operate it are, I understand, very well satisfied with it. So I think overall it was good money spent on our part, and it adds a little, when you got it, when you got a new outfit, it just, you know, it just kind of makes that, that pride kind of just stands up a little bit, so. And I'm proud of our police force anyway, so. But there's going to be a, do I dare tell them what kind it is since it's unmarked?
Temporarily. They have to add over graphics, but they have to make them yet and then have time to get it and get them installed. So within the next couple of weeks, we'll get graphics put on it.
Well, the other thing I want to note is, would it be alright if the mayor got a ride in it sometime?
I'd rather. I'm likewise.
I really hate.
Yeah. Can Karen pick that up?
Yeah, that's by George. Follow the back.
You can make an illegal U-turn and get a ride?
I hope we've got a couple of attorneys here tonight. Well, we're approaching time for the 7:15 hearing, and again, this is a, a hearing on the temporary alcohol beverage license. Again, for the Rotary Club to be used in Centennial Park, Centennial Park for Climb Hot Springs events. And the time is 7:15. We'll open the hearing at this time. Are there any comments from the public concerning this event and whether this temporary license should be granted or not? Hearing done, I'll ask the council if we can get a motion to approve this temporary alcoholic beverage license.
I'll make a motion for the temporary alcohol beverage license for the Rotary Club to use at Centennial Park on September 23rd for the Climb the Hot Springs event.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we grant this temporary alcohol beverage license. Are there any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next hearing is at 7:20 PM. And so again, are there any communications?
The Yankees are down.
Can we go on and approve the personnel?
We can look at the personnel. I do, I think we can take all of these from item A through item R. And I do want to point out one thing. Item H, we do have a new police officer that we are in process of, of hiring and want approval for tonight. Jennifer Win Scott comes to us certified from the state of Wyoming. She will receive a reciprocity in South Dakota to be certified after successfully completing a written exam and had a one-week session at the Police Academy in Pierre. We drafted a modified agreement for her. There would be repayment should she fail to certify or separate service from the city. And it's the same agreement that we've used with other police officers. I've had the opportunity to review her application and talk it over with Chief Close, and I think we're getting a, a very well-qualified officer. She's been serving the county as a jailer, and so we're looking forward to having her on the force. But with that said, I will accept a motion to accept the personnel actions A through R.
I'll make a motion to accept the personnel on our list A to R.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept these personnel actions as printed. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Carol Ann, can you give us a committee report and give the, the stock in another word?
I think I'm fast enough.
Okay.
Okay. We met today at noon at City Hall. New business, Dawn from the library was there with cleaning proposals. That's the people that clean the library and how much they charge doing it every month. These will be reviewed, and this will be on the next admin meeting agenda. Old business, surplus of city property, this will be on the next admin agenda. When proposals will be studied, there's going to be a meeting of the housing initiative at Woolies on Wednesday, this Wednesday at 5:30. All interested are invited to attend. Council members will hopefully attend. City time clocks will be used as requested by department heads. City attorney to be discussed tonight in executive session. New business, our finance officer gave us a report. We also discussed the positions that would receive cell phone reimbursement. One, the first one will be our city administrator. SRDS training recap by the finance officer, and also an election update. And that's all.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead. Again, as we approach the 7:20 time, we're reminded that our hearing is for the Battle Mountain Convenience for on-off malt beverage, on-off sale, South Dakota wines license to be used at the location 740 Battle Mountain Avenue. And we'll open that hearing at this time. Are there any comments from the public?
I'd like to comment on that to make sure the public knows that this is not a temporary license. This is an on-off sale malt beverage, on-off sale state wines license. So it's not temporary for one or two days.
Is this a new style license? Have we had this license in the past?
I believe we have.
We have, yes. The business currently has the same license but without the farm wine component. And so instead of renewing that same license this year, they're seeking to expand the farm wine, Bob, I think just a handful of South Dakota made ones.
Okay, but does this fall into the same category, or is this a special category where they're including South Dakota wines?
This would be a new category from what they currently have. It's existing license type, but now they're pursuing this one separate what they used to have. Is that clear? It's a little, lost licenses out there, both permanent and temporary.
Okay, I just, I don't recall ever having like a South Dakota wines specifically in the past. That's why, that's why I wondered whether this was a new category or?
It's not that new. It's been around since I started.
But have we, have we had that license in, in Hot Springs?
Yes.
With the South Dakota wines? Okay.
Are there any other comments or questions from the audience? If not, I will accept a motion from the council to grant that on-off sale malt beverage license and wines license to Battle Mountain Convenience.
I'll make a motion that we grant Battle Mountain Convenience on-off sale malt beverage, on-off sale South Dakota farm license.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we grant this license. Are there any discussion from the council? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next hearing will be at 7:25. Georgia can give us a airport advisory committee update?
Okay, we met this last Friday, on the 28th. We talked about the parallel taxiway. It's being, doing, the progress is going very fast, very good. Ed's starting to do a lot of mowing out there, and they're starting to put siding on the new private hangar. The SEH was out and they looked at what the progress, they've been checking on that frequently. The topsoil that's coming off in the parallel taxiway, he's piling up to use in different fill places for later. He wants to remind everybody, there's two phases for five-day closures, and that's, then he'll have a notice put up those, but you can still use the grass runway. We also have two days a week, starting May 2nd, with Wayne Harris working to help Ed out there. We have a new fence that goes around on the north side of the airport to divide the property between rowbies. The bids for, have been looked at for a plow shed so that the diesel vehicle can have some cover as the brakes froze up this winter. Right now, he's putting it in the airport, the big hangar if it's empty. We have four new students this last year that have become pilots. When I went to the pilot, or the airport aeronautics commission, it was noted that we have a shortage of pilots. So he wants people to know that there are instructions going on out there, and people can apply with, I think Tracy right now is the one doing the education for the new pilots. So if you're interested, you should probably talk to Ed, and he'll help you out. We do have the balloon festival that's coming up in the fall, and we're looking at doing a booth and some information on the airport at that time. And I guess they're having Mondays and Tuesday meetings now with Nolan. Is that right?
Just only one for each part.
One? Okay.
Had a one-on-one leadership.
Okay, anyway, that's all I had. Oh, I do have one more. There's five airport advisory members right now, and they're looking for someone else. And I think we have someone interested, but I have the list of those. If anyone would like to talk to Ed, I think he would appreciate having another board member.
Okay, thanks, Georgia. The time is now 7:25. And for the hearing for temporary alcoholic beverage licenses for the Hot Springs law to be used on May 26th for the wine hut, wine and hut event at the following locations. Galactic's Books and Treasures, Morning Sunshine, Chautauqua Artisans Market, Willie Jack's Pond, and Consignments and Wonderment Gardens. Are there any comments or questions from the public concerning this? And this is a temporary license?
I know it's gone over really well in the past. I'll make a motion that all five temporary alcoholic beverage licenses be accepted for 5/26 of 17 for the wine and hut event.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we accept these five temporary beverage licenses. Are there any discussion from the council? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we'll move on in our committee reports. Andre is not here tonight. Downtown Historic Preservation Commission, Carol Ann.
We'll meet this Wednesday at 5:00 at the library. All are welcome.
We've got the Evans Plunge Advisory Committee, Kara?
We need the third, we've been meeting the third Thursday at 7:00 PM with the upper level of Evans Plunge. We have each month to go over a five-year plan. Anybody's welcome to attend. We're just kind of hashing out the details on what the improvements will be over the next five years. If we want to just toss this around as much as we have to, to come up with our best plan that we can make for our budgets for five years so we can post that, and then the, the members and other people know that we have an active interest in what we're going to be doing there at Evans Plunge in the future, that we still plan on making some really good improvements. improvements. We talked about the floor in the ladies locker room. They have put a different seal on top. It's, it's not, they need to work on the appearance of that, in my opinion. I would hope that they could come up with a different stain so they could kind of blend it out a little bit. To me, it looks like it's unfinished. So it's kind of a tough deal. The sealant, this anti-slip sealant that we had didn't really work. So we've been exploring options on what we can do to better improve the floor now that it's been sealed. So we're under warranty and Mitch, the guy who did the work, is going to be coming back and working on that project as much as he can. I know he did another application last Tuesday. He'll probably have to get in there after hours to do his final work. So I will take that into consideration down the road, of course, when we do any more improvements to the flooring. I do have some numbers. So this will be different than your numbers in your packet, council members, because your numbers are through the 27th of April and these numbers I got from Misty are through the 30th. So we have in revenue $29,827.82 in April of 2017 and expenses $36,621.41. So our year-to-date is $104,049.06 in revenue, expenses $224,474.23. I want to compare this to last year. We are, we're down $120,425.17 from revenue to expenses. But last year, we were at minus $116,529.59. So this time of year, with all the improvements we do, it always kind of looks bad, but Chris said we've got a really full agenda for me and people are just booking and coming and renewing their memberships. So it's looking really good. So hopefully we'll have as good a year this year as we have in the past year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kara. Parks and Recreation, Beautification and Cultural Development, Krista?
Yes, we had our meeting today at 3 o'clock at City Hall. And a vote call was taken with all committee members except for Tim Kestha was present. Brian East and I hope I'm saying his name right, Skyler Wetzel along with Gerald Culloden, representing the Els Club. On the old business, we update, the updates on Butler Park Tennis Court resurfacing will be done this month. A two-week process, two-week advance notice to us and we'll have the nets down and the weeds removed. Update on Butler Park Youth Baseball Field Lighting will be happening this Friday. Poles today, Black Hills Energy and our staff will be working together to get the lighting and the poles up, about a two-week process. Review of the five-year plan, we as a committee met and had worked out using the Tallgrass Plan, a five-year plan of what's coming up in the next several years, in the next five years. And so we reviewed that, by what we had worked on, the review of the five-year plan using all of Tallgrass's, their, their plan. Sorry, I lost my place there. And we're moving forward on that, on that process. New business, the Els Organization donated and presented by Brian East, Skyler Wetzel and Gerald Culloden a $3,000 check, or well, will be, to be used for tennis nets, practice backstops and two basketball hoops and backboards. And the park and the rec, Parks and Recs in the city of Hot Springs want to thank the Els Club for this generous donation. Discussion was on referencing the no smoking signs in the parks led to getting more feedback from the public on this, what the public thinks about this. So that will be moved to the next Parks and Recs meeting if anyone's interested.
Can you clarify what you're asking?
Uh, the, there was discussion about putting up no smoking signs like around the playgrounds at the parks and other areas. And so we decided to go ahead and get public input. So if you're interested in any, how you might want us to go forward on this, we will be bringing this up again at the next Parks meeting. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Butler Park Tree Planting Schedule is for May 9th. Josh Larson will be available for guidance as we put in those trees. And the Parks update from Nolan was that the bases have been installed at Butler for the disc baskets to be added this week. Pre-removal next week, coordinating with the DOC inmates for the tree removal for the extension of the Freedom Trail. Wayfinding signs are on order and the rail has been cut to size six foot and will be placed throughout the summer as time and staff available. Brookside Bathroom is completed and the person signage has been ordered and will be put up as soon as it arrives. Next year's landscaping and sprinklers will be done as soon as the new shelter is completed. In the meantime, it was discussed about just using an annual seed that is inexpensive to hold the soil and that's still kind of being discussed, will probably be finished up at next Parks meeting. Other concern, other committee concerns was the parking at the recent soccer event, which I understand was well-attended. And there was mixed thoughts on, on moving forward on that and it was, it was suggested to not move forward with it as that's pretty much the person who puts on the events responsibility, not really the cities. And it's not a reoccurring event. The poles at the tennis court, it was discussed to be painted or not painted. And it was discussed that let's not paint it because then that's another thing that has to be repainted and repainted and we have a lot of things that are repainted at this time already. And that was the end of the Parks and Recs meeting. At the Mueller Center this week, we have coming up the MSHS Band at 7 o'clock on Thursday, Cornerstone 5:00 PM Martin Music at 7:00 on Friday, Cornerstone Graduation at 1:00 PM on Saturday, Hot Springs Vocal Concert, or is that high school? I think that's Hot Springs Vocal Concert at 7:00 on Monday, the 8th. At 7:00 on Monday, the 8th. And the Community Theater Auditions are at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, the 9th. Blood Ride at 11 to 5 o'clock on Thursday, the 11th. And the Bacolari at 9:00 AM. The Grand Party at 2:00 on Saturday, the 13th. And our next meeting at Parks and Recs will be on the 5th, Monday, at 3 o'clock at City Hall. And everybody's welcome to attend.
Can I ask you a question? You know, because we're spraying the weeds down on the river today, is there any thing for, are we going to spray up around Butler Park for the dandelions and stuff like that? Because if I live across the street from Butler Park, unlucky, I live on the other side of the block, but the dandelions are terrible up there. There's no way you could keep them on your yard unless the city sprays them.
I, that was not brought up with Parks and Recs and this is the first time I've heard about it, so. But thanks for bringing it to our attention.
Well, I probably said something to you, but I really didn't notice it till I was on my way home from the meeting at noon. They're all on little white muff balls now.
Yeah. We are, we did contract with Steve DeGore. Steve spotsprays, do a lot of spraying throughout the city and Butler Park especially. Our budget was mostly limited to the playground areas and the ball fields, getting all those weeds killed and such. If we were to do a full weed application for the whole park, the cost of that would be quite high. I can give you the numbers as far as it works out, over $8,000 or so to do a full Parks application.
I know how hard everybody works to keep dandelions out of their yard and maybe where they're across the street and it's just white.
Hey, actually, straight men. But that's my daughter.
Mine reads mine, it's why it's working.
Oh, there you go.
Thanks a lot, very busy meeting and appreciate the update. Krista?
Thank you.
Planning and zoning commission, Kim is not here tonight, but one of the things that she wanted me to update you on is that we're working on an adult business ordinance that complies with state law. Don't have any prospects of anything coming in, but what we want to do is have an ordinance in place in the event that something wants to locate here like that, that we can regulate where it is. And so we're getting language together and we'll be bringing that before the council in the next month or two. Next item is public safety. Bob?
Public Safety had a short meeting, April 19th. Mayor Cotty was there, Tim, Misty joined us for this meeting and myself. We had three old business items. The first one was the update on the new police vehicle, which we now have a new update on that, but at the time of the meeting, we were still waiting on the installation of equipment, expecting the truck to be in use by the second week of May. So now we're, trucks already in use?
Yes.
Thank you very much for that. Update on the police K-9 unit, still waiting on the state to determine whether there's going to be any funding available for that. We also talked about the conversion of Jennings Avenue adjacent to the elementary school to one-way. We talked about that a couple of months ago, maybe. Signing and painting was expected to be done last week, weather permitting. Once the project is done, the city will have a city scoop article in the Hot Springs Star along with a Facebook and Nixle post. In new business, we discussed the water protection resolution. It was decided that because the admin finance committee had been discussing that for a couple of weeks, that that's really where that needed to stay. And then a resolution come out of that committee. We were also asked to review the city's ordinance, 1126, Chapter 4A. It's the city's animal ordinance. There was a situation where some neighbor's pet pig or pot-bellied pig was eating the other neighbor's flowers and they were concerned about that. So we just wanted to look at swine in particular and foxes, rabbits. We'll, we'll be looking at that over the next couple of meetings and once we get that figured out, then we'll pass it on to the full council for their input.
Please do. There is a dandelion.
There you go. Make a spot up at Butler Park with pot-bellied pigs. The next meeting will be, of the public works will be Wednesday, May 17th, 2 o'clock at City Hall and the public is welcome.
And Bob, could you give us update on public works?
Public Works met on April 25th, 2 o'clock, City Hall. Tracy was with us, Nolan, Mayor Cotty, Tim and myself. Quite a list of old business items. Still looking at replacing the sewer line in the alley of West 16th Street that's being worked into the city's schedule of projects. The Evans Plunge roof bid opening will be May 9th. Quotes for the fencing around the city water sources. The city's received a total of three quotes, three quotes, which meets the state bid requirements to have the fencing installed at the hot water pumping station and the two water storage tanks. The lowest of the three quotes is just under the state bid requirements of $50,000. The replacement of the fencing isn't in the city's 2017 budget, but the public work, Public Works Committee feels the importance of securing the city's water sources warrants the installation of the fencing. If approved, the council would need to do a supplemental appropriation for the cost of the fencing, with the cost most likely coming from the Water Department's Reserve Fund. Boulder Falls project, at the time, we were still waiting on an announcement from Rural Development, but I believe Mayor Cotty has an update for us on that.
Yes, we just did receive the go-ahead to go out for bids this, today from Rural Development. So Tracy will be getting on that tomorrow and we will be going out for bids. We anticipate a bid opening on the 30th of May with a award date on the 5th of June, which will be bringing before the council on the 5th of June. So that is moving forward and as that is, has happened, there was a contractor out raking ground on a lot in Boulder Falls in front of our house today. So I don't know if that was a coincidence or what. You know, it means that Hot Springs is growing, so that's great.
Thank you. We're also following the sludge de-watering equipment. City's still waiting on delivery of the final parts for the sludge screw press. The project for installation of the equipment is ready to go out for bid. The hope is that the full council approve a bid date for the project of May 31st with a project completion of September 17th. Shipping of the brush pile to landfill, still having those discussions with the business and property owners for the best way to dispose of that brush pile. Update on the Pete Lean and Sons mining contract, city's still waiting on a reply from FAA about mining on airport property. Sewer line at 1405 Baltimore Avenue, we discussed that last time. The estimate for the labor and materials to extend the sewer line into the alley to serve 1405 Baltimore Avenue is approximately $9,000 and the public works committee is recommending extending that sewer line for the property owner. Shared public parking with Wells Fargo, Nolan has contacted Wells Fargo and they are open to discussing using their parking lot for public parking. Those discussions with Wells Fargo will continue to see what sort of arrangement might be possible between them and the city. There's a ditch problem on the north 4th Street that's anticipated to be completed around the end of May. The water fill station privacy fence, that's up and complete, looks great. And thank you to all the city staff that worked on the installation of fence. New business, it's kind of new old business. The city approved, or the council approved at the end of last year, no parking on the south side of Thompson Street and the city gurus will, I believe Nolan said they're working on getting that done this week, that'd be the painting and the signage. There's, we started a discussion about a sewer line extension up on Fresno Avenue. There's a half block of Fresno Avenue that doesn't have any sewer line up there. So we want to look at what might be done to get that taken care of. The free dump week, comments from the public about the recent dump, the free dump week were mostly positive. There was one suggestion to extend the hours the dump is open and possibly add Saturday to the schedule. Possibility of adding Saturday to the free dump week will be discussed with a focus on the extra salary dollars needed. Extra, extra salary dollars required to add Saturday to the schedule. That was it for our items. The next meeting will be May 9th at City Hall at 2 o'clock and the public is welcome.
Thank you, Bob. Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee?
We did have a meeting. We discussed the possibility of getting some divot boxes on the par threes and on the range. We also discussed pin placement sheets and also new flags. We will soon be getting plastic gift certificates in place of the paper ones that we have now. We also discussed a parking problem up by the clubhouse. Also, I want to give a huge thank you to Drew Schroeder with Builders Source for the bathroom siding that they donated. They just finished that project and they look awesome. Also, our streets department, thank you for helping to fill the canyon on number 11. That's all you got.
Okay, thanks, Scott. And the volunteer fire department, Andre isn't here. I did get a chance a week, a week, a little more than a week ago to meet with the new fire chief, who is Dar Coy. And the fire department was called into action this weekend and I think did an outstanding job of saving a home. So our thanks to our volunteer fire department. We appreciate the job that they do protecting us and our property. This time, we'll move on to the resolution, item A. We have a, before you, in your packages, Resolution 2017-10. It's a resolution to reaffirm a citywide commitment for clean water and water resource protection. protection. And as was been mentioned, this was reviewed in the Admin and Finance Committee meeting and provided to the council for feedback. Some feedback has been received. We've made some edits to the resolution, and as requested by Admin and Finance, that this draft come before you this night for consideration. So at this time, I will accept a motion either to accept this Resolution 2017-10.
I'll make a motion to accept Resolution 2017-10, a resolution to affirm a citywide commitment for clean water and water resource protection. I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we pass Resolution 2017-10. Is there any discussion, either from the public or from council? Yes.
I would like to, I would like to see, or here, would it be appropriate for me to read it again?
Sure, we can.
I saw a draft, but I don't know.
Okay, I can go ahead and read that. Be it resolved by the city common council of the city of Hot Springs, South Dakota, that we are committed to preserving and maintaining the amount and quality of water for the citizens of Hot Springs and its sounding environments. And whereas the city of Hot Springs was first developed as a town in the late 1800s due to its proximity to the Fall River and the abundant natural warm mineral springs within the valley. And whereas the city of Hot Springs has made long-term investments in storm water management, potable water systems and wastewater management programs and infrastructure to reduce nutrients and pollution in our waters and protect our vital water resources. And whereas the common council is obligated to preserve and protect the public health, safety and welfare by preventing the pollution of and maintaining the quality of water entering in, held within and removed from the aquifers serving as a city's water source. And whereas the city of Hot Springs has stated in its water ordinance that our mission is to provide the city's water customers with safe drinking water supply, water for fire protection and inadequate supply of water for our essential daily needs. And whereas the city of Hot Springs common council finds that any pollution or contamination, willful or not, of our water supply to be a direct threat to our community and its health, safety and welfare. And therefore, be it resolved that the city of Hot Springs will take necessary action to ensure the perpetual purity and quality of the waters available for use by the citizens of Hot Springs and those the city distributes water to. And therefore, commit to support any action from the county, state or federal governments aimed at protecting the waters of South Dakota, both surface water and underground aquifers as a critical natural resource necessary for life.
That sound good? I think, I think that's what we've been asking for for quite a while.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion, questions or comments?
Can we get a copy of that resolution?
Yes, I think.
The available at City Hall.
Be available at City Hall.
Marty, you can have mine.
And it would not be published until 20 days after publication, but you can get a copy of the draft.
Okay, yeah, we do have a motion on the floor, and if there's not any further discussion at this time, I'd ask all those in favor of Resolution 2017-10, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I would also like to tell you that next Wednesday here at the Mueller Center, EPA will be here, hearing public comment on the draft permits for the 4,000 walls on it. And it, you know, I just heard, as you say, it will take effect 20 days after it's published. Is there any way somebody from the city can come and present this to the EPA?
Go ahead. I don't know if any of the council would be available.
When will they be here?
The hearing's gonna, the public comment will start at 1:00, and there'll be a break at 5:00 to 6:00 for dinner, and then the reason from 6:00 to 8:00.
Is that this Wednesday?
10th.
Yeah, I'll be out of town or I can call.
I will. Thank you.
Yeah, I would.
Thank you. And I invite any of you and everybody in this room and in the town and in the county to come and express your feelings about damage to our water.
How can we get an address to write a letter like, I'm gonna be out of town?
Yeah, the public comment ends on the 19th, and I have the EPA.
See the paper tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You have email in there or the?
I think the address.
Okay, good.
Sir, I'll be there too.
Okay, thank you.
I will too.
We'll move on to new business, item A. We have discussion and possible motion to approve a sewer line installation between South 14th and South 15th Street, and this is approximately 75 feet of sewer line. And we've had this under review in the Public Works Committee at both April meetings, and they have recommended that it come before the full council for your approval. This would extend an existing sewer main down, down a public alley, allowing a private citizen's property to connect to it, which would eliminate this citizen's line from going underneath their neighbor's property, which is no fault of their own. It was when the house was built, that's the way they laid the sewer line out. So you have a motion, or I would accept a motion to accept this installation.
I make a motion to approve sewer line installation between South 14th and South 15th totaling approximately 75 feet.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve this sewer line. Is there any questions, comments or discussion?
I think we've had like three or four of these that we've been trying to get corrected, so I'm really glad we're doing it.
Okay, good.
This is one of the ladies in question is they're actually having sewer problems now, and that's the reason that this was brought before us. But we do have a lot of places in town where one guy built two houses, so we've got two houses on one sewer line going into the sewer main. And a lot of times we end up with problems, I know several that we fixed already, and they just keep coming up.
Is there an estimate of expenses?
I believe that was. That's the $9,000 that are referenced in my report.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll move on to item B, discussion and possible motion to approve fencing for the hot spring pumping station and the two water storage tanks. I think you've heard this discussed tonight. Again, just a reminder that this is a security issue of securing our water supply here in Hot Springs, and the design has been modified to come in under the $50,000 limit. We'll accept a motion at this time to accept and approve that fencing.
I'll make a motion to approve the fencing of the hot spring pumping station and two water storage tanks.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that we do approve that fencing to secure our storage tanks and hot spring pumping station. And again, just a reminder that the council at a later date will need to do a supplemental appropriation to fund this project, and the money likely coming out of the Water Department's reserve account. Is there any further discussion, questions or comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item C, we have before us a motion, I'll accept a motion to accept bids for installation of a screw press with a bid opening date of May 31st at 1:15 PM at City Hall. And this is that infamous screw press that we've been trying to get here from our supplier that's been delayed in shipping. What we're looking for is when that equipment does get delivered, we need a contractor to go ahead and install it. If there is any further delay with the equipment, the timeline for the installation then would have to be extended to correspond whenever that equipment gets here. So at this time, I'd accept a motion to accept those bids.
I'll make a motion to accept bids for installation of screw press, bid opening May 31st, 1:15 PM at City Hall.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have it been moved and seconded, then we accept the bids for the installation of the screw press on the 31st of May at 1:15. Is there any questions, comments or discussions concerning this work? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. As you noted, item D is off of the agenda tonight, and the item E is discussion, possible motion to renew all 2016, 2017 malt beverage license holders. And this is something that we as a council do annually, and it's required to prevent the sale of malt beverages by all current license holders. And you should have a full list of those license holders in your package. I did check with Chief Close to ensure that we had no, none of the names or businesses on this list were in any kind of serious violations or would be susceptible to not having their malt liquor licenses renewed. So at this time, if someone could make a motion to renew these licenses, would you accept it?
I'll make the motion to renew all 2016, 2017 malt beverage license holders.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that we renew the licenses. Is there any questions, comments or discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll stay.
Motion carries. Okay, we move on, and the agenda, Finance Officer, report, Misty, can you update us, please?
You did receive financial reports in your package for the month of April. Due to the timing of the meeting, it is, as Kara mentioned here in your reports, it's start April 27th, so that's the last few days of the month. You have the year-to-date profit lock summary report, which we went over at Admin Finance today, talked about some comparisons to revenue expenditures this time last year. You have a fund summary report, which shows the budget versus the actual for the revenue and expenses. You have a cash balance report that includes Wells Fargo, which is our main checking account, and our main plus checking, and then an investment report by institution and by investment banks that shows all the cash assets in the city. And then for this month only, I also included a copy of the boards and committees and commissions and their members for each of you. I was tasked to work on that, and even after a couple of months of doing it, just sending it out to you, I got a couple of updates today. So please review that if you're on a committee and you don't have right information. We try very hard to keep track of that, so if something's wrong, let me know. For the public who's here, the voter registration deadline will be May 22nd. We still are accepting nominating petitions for the mayoral vacancy, but the window is closed and we'll have a race in Ward 1 and Ward 4, so please make sure you register to vote and be ready to vote on election day, June 6th. Couple other things we talked about today was an update on the training, the authorized agent training that the council allowed myself and the Assistant Finance Officer to go to for South Florida retirement system. We provided an update on what we learned there, thank them for that. And also just ask each of you to bear with us, all these things are going on in the spring. If we don't give you enough information for any one project, please make sure to ask. We're trying to juggle it all and keep you all informed, so just want to make sure that y'all all know that questions are always welcome, and so sometimes struggle with how much to use, it's like drinking from a water hose and we treat everything every time we see you, but if there's something specific that we're not giving you that you need, please make sure you know that. I say we. Thanks. So does that?
Thank you.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot. On May 5th, here at the Mueller Center, from 12 to 2, that's this Friday, we'll be hosting staff in the office of Mike Browns, Senator Mike Browns. He'll visit, they will be available to visit with Hot Springs residents and assist them with any issues they may have dealing with federal agencies. So it'll be nice to have someone here, and if you have something you want to talk to our senator about, this is your opportunity to do that in two hours, and through on Friday from 12 to 2.
Thank you, Misty. Nolan, if you could give us a city administrator report?
Sure. First off, today's May 1st, so Evans Plunge begins their summer hours today. That means they're open seven days a week, Monday through Friday. I think it's 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and then Saturday and Sunday is 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Along that same line, the golf course, if you guys have received your water bill yet, the golf course next week, I think it's Sunday through Saturday, if you redeem your water bill, you'll get a free nine holes round of golf or a free large button rain balls. That's as a thank you from utilities customer, but also to encourage you to get out and experience the golf course. Next week too, we have good weather, so definitely take us up on that. And one water bill equals one nine hole round of golf or one large button rainy balls. Next week, Krista mentioned that we have the DOE in town that'll be working north of the plunge, clearing brush and trees along with the Freedom Trails being extended. Our plan for that project is we did get a $10,000 grant through the Freedom Trail to the Bellmark Foundation. So our first approach is to clear the brush and clear the trees through there, and as time permits through May, June, July and even August, we'll done that, a blade graded and we put down some crushed, most likely crushed limestone. Think of the Nicholson Trail, a similar surface to that initially. And the park's five-year plan, we'd like to look to grants, like the RTB grant, the hard surface, get concrete, and also run conduit out that way. When the DOE constructs our downtown, they'll replace all the streetlights, so we'll have to repurpose those streetlights along the Freedom Trail and add like a section of trail as well. For those unaware, in my email signature, my cell phone number is changing, May 5th. I'll stop carrying around every gadget you can imagine, I just carry around one phone, so if you need my number and I do number, please reach out to me, I'll get that to you. My 0095 number will be discontinued on May 5th, so that's a hard stop time. And then lastly, this Saturday, the Great American Cleanup's taking place throughout the downtown area, so those of you who want to get out, get some sunshine, I think the high on Saturday is 80 degrees, so you have no excuse not to be outside. Keep Hot Springs Beautiful is organizing the Great American Cleanup, where volunteers get out and they help clear up the pods downtown. A lot of the compliments we get is how beautiful our downtown is. A lot of the beauty comes from volunteer labor and helping out, caring for those pods. Also, additionally to pods, we'll have the River cleanup taking place. I think there's also a plant swap and maybe some t-shirts. I'm not sure what all's planned, but it's always a good time and definitely this year, big weather, so that's good. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to add something to that. I'm part of the Keep Hot Springs Beautiful. The organization that has the most attendings, we always give a $50 to that organization. And anybody that works, there's also a lunch at United Church in that gate.
Okay, thank you. And look forward to getting Hot Springs all cleaned up on Saturday. I'd like to just give a little bit of report from my perspective. First of all, as you know, I mentioned last meeting, the meeting that we're looking at perhaps ways that we can improve workforce housing here in Hot Springs. I've had an opportunity to meet with the VA committee, and one of the things, if we save the VA, we've got to have houses for the workers that are coming into the call center and filling slots at the VA. So we've got a housing study that shows what those needs are, and so we'll be aggressively working to try to stimulate, act as a catalyst to get. working to try to stimulate, act as a catalyst to get workforce housing started. As Caroline mentioned, Wednesday night, we'll be meeting with local builders group at Woolies at 5:30, and I'd invite all of you who can attend from the council. We put a notice of quorum up, so we do have a quorum there, a quorum there. But, and one of the reasons that we want to get started on this, I just got a message today from the Governor's Office of Economic Development, that they're offering some assistance to communities that need workforce housing. And so we want to get a plan together, so when the details of this grant or whatever, however they choose to do that come out, we are one of the first in line to get that assistance, to posture ourselves to take advantage of it. So we're in the process of gathering information and meeting together with the construction and building industry to come up with a good plan. Secondly, I've had the opportunity over the past several weeks to meet with several of the committees, and I've really been impressed with the fact that we have a large number of citizens within the community that volunteer their time to serve on our committees, various committees, and I just want to say thank you for that. I do encourage, however, that those, that do attend those meetings, come with a positive pitch. Obviously, there's going to be things that we need to correct and we're aware of and working on, but I just would encourage people to come with a positive attitude as we work together to solve the various issues that lay before us. And I, again, want to thank all the volunteers that do take their time, along with you council members who spend extra time working on these committees, and you see there's a lot of things that go on in the committee meetings. One final thing I just want to touch on, I've asked that our public works engineer come up with a plan to prioritize how we work on getting our streets chip sealed this summer. And we don't have very much money in the budget, and it's not going to be very much that we're going to be able to get done. But I think we need to start looking at a priority way of doing that. You know, you've seen a lot of work that has gone on this spring with parks, and I think that's outstanding, and summer is kind of construction season. And so we want to try to get a, a prioritized list of streets over the next several years that we want to get chip sealed to maintain our infrastructure and keep our city streets as smooth and updated as we can. And then I did mention earlier, and we're thankful that the Boulder Falls paving project is finally ready to go out to bid, and hopefully we can have additional housing starts there as that area gets paved. And that concludes my report. At this time, I would accept a motion from the council to go into executive session for legal matters, and we will be having a decision after the executive session, so.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that council will be in executive session for legal matters. All those in favor?
It's all right to go, Bob. It's all reported.
We got a little bit on the house. That's a good effort. I think you're right. Oh, it's green. It's gotta be green. I'm red. I got a red.
Hey, it's working.
I got green.
I'm going with your album.
Yeah.
I'm sure of it.
It's not a good signal, you're not hurting.
Oh my gosh, it's scary. Can I get caught up?
Do you have word or I don't know.
You know what I'm gonna say? I just have your case in.
Oh.
The rent, the rental. Yeah, that's right. Like UCA, like it's kind of a thought. Everything we could. Very happy here, so.
Yeah.
They're big.
Yeah.
My house is this time, but this guy's a roll.
Do you have a girlfriend?
And I understand.
Okay, in the, time is 9:22, we'll reconvene the council, and we will, I will accept a motion concerning the appointment of a city attorney.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the appointment for Beasley's Law Office from Custer, South Dakota, for our, our attorney.
You'll entertain a motion?
Yeah. I am making a motion. Whatever.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we hire the Beasley Law Firm out of Custer as a city attorney for Hot Springs. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion, or against, signify by saying nay. Motion carries unanimously. And what I'll do is write Mr. Wenzel a letter of appreciation for his past service to the city of Hot Springs, likewise for his willingness to serve as our attorney again. And we will notify Mr. Beasley that he is.
He's done a good job. Most do endure.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.